I will now call to order the November 14, 2024 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes Chair Smith, thank you. First, our staff support today: Clerk to the Board Andrew Giraki, County Council Jane Vedo, Commissioner Savis is out of the office today attending a regional transportation meeting, Commissioner Schrader is on her way. You do have a quorum present because online is Commissioner West. Roll call Commissioner West.
I'm here.
In the room Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting virtually and in person. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Administrator Gary Schmidt, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes Chair Smith, first is a public hearing. Item 1, second reading of Ordinance Number 04-2024, Ambulance Service Plan. Rod Cook, Director of Health Housing and Human Services, and Philip Mason-Joyner, Public Health Division Director, will present. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Oregon revised statutes require each county to establish a plan for the county for efficient and effective ambulance services. This is referred to as the Ambulance Service Plan. The proposed ambulance service plan update has been approved by the Oregon Health Authority. Clackamas County Code Chapter 10.01, Ambulance Service, is the codified form of the county's ambulance service plan. This is the second of two required public hearings regarding the updates to the ambulance service plan.
Good morning Chair Smith and Commissioners. Again Philip Mason-Joyner, Public Health Division Director. Since the first public hearing a couple of weeks ago, there has been one edit or revision to the plan that occurred after the first hearing, which a stakeholder commented on and identified for us. This is a technical and grammatical edit. It is Item 10 dot 01 dot 030 subsection QQ. The definition of unit hour utilization was changed from means the ration between the number of transports divided by the number of incidents to now it's changed to is calculated by dividing the number of transports by the number of unit hours. So we appreciate folks looking at the document, seeing that that needed to be clarified, and we appreciate that change.
Who made that change Philip?
That was submitted by staff at American Medical Response.
So it was a staff change, thank you.
Andrew, you want to comment on that? Since you're the attorney, just making sure I'm touching all the bases.
Thank you Chair, Andrew Naylor Assistant County Counsel. When there is a change from the first reading by title only, generally you have to read it out loud if it substantially differs from the original amendment that was submitted. This one, it's questionable if it's a substantial change, but out of an abundance of caution and for full transparency, we recommend reading the change out loud at a public hearing to ensure we're in full compliance.
Thank you for that Jane. Okay, I just want to make sure, okay. What's up next?
Is that your presentation?
That is our presentation.
Our presentation. Do the Commissioners have any other clarifying questions or comments on this? I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take in-person testimony first. I think I have one blue card in the House, and apologize if I missed your name. Is it Tina Burgess?
We got it.
Alrighty, come on down. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name's Tina Burgess, I'm the Communications Manager for Lake Oswego's Communication Center, and I live in Wilsonville, Oregon. Business is out of Lake Oswego. So I'm going to be very quick, but I'm just here to show support for the ASA Plan. I'm willing to support the opportunities for clinical improvement efforts on programs like we recently implemented with the Nurse Navigation Program, as well as any of the quality insurance, quality improvement efforts that come through their case reviews.
Thank you very much Tina. Appreciate your support on this. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to comment at this time on the ambulance plan? Thank you very much. Seeing no one on the ambulance plan. Andrew, do we have anyone online who would like to comment on the ambulance plan?
Madam Chair, I've received no advance registrations for anyone who'd like to speak on this specific matter, but if you are attending the meeting virtually and you would like to speak specifically on this matter, I'll now ask you to raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, we read the ordinance by title only.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved, we read title by, ordinance by title only, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the poll?
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye, motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much for everybody's participation in this.
Apologies Chair, could we read the change prior?
I thought it was read, sorry. Who wants to read that? Me?
I'll do it.
Go ahead.
In section 10.01.030 subsection QQ, the definition of unit hour utilization was changed to the following: is calculated by dividing the number of transports by the number of unit hours.
Do we need to have a clarifying motion on the language? Do we need to add this to the previous motion?
Yes, I think so.
I will entertain a motion to add the language just read in the approval of the ambulance plan.
I move to approve the language as just stated by the county administrator.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved, we approve the additional language as read by the county administrator to the ambulance plan, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye, motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. Now we need a secondary motion, Andrew, to read the ordinance.
If Andrew would read the ordinance by title only, please. Go ahead Andrew.
The ordinance will be numbered 04-2024, an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code Chapter 10.01, Ambulance Service Plan.
Do Commissioners have any questions at this time?
No.
I will entertain that motion.
I move, we approve ordinance 04-2024, an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code Chapter 10.01, Ambulance Service Plan.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved, we approve ordinance 04-2024, an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code Chapter 10.01, Ambulance Service Plan, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye, motion passes 4-0. Very nice, thank you all. Gary, what's next?
Thank you. Next is the Consent Agenda. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Consent Agenda. Item A, Elected Officials. Number 1, Approval of a Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. B, Finance. 1, Approval of a Contract with Johnson Controls Incorporated for New Building Automation Engines. Total contract value is $171,957 for 6 months. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. C, Transportation and Development. Approval of a Regional Flexible Funds Allocation Grant Application for Clackamas Industrial Area Improvements and the Southeast Jennifer Street Multi-Use Path. Total grant value is $7,228,290 for 4 years. Funding is through Metro. Match of $827,310 is through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. D, Health Housing and Human Services. 1, Approval of an Amendment to an Intergovernmental Revenue Agreement with Lane County for Online Food Handler Training and Testing. Amendment value is $110,000 for 2 years. Total agreement value is $485,000 for 6 years. Funding is through Lane County. No county general funds are involved. 2, Approval of an Amendment to an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for Drug and Alcohol Prevention Programming. Amendment value is $619,701 for 3 years. Total agreement value is $2526,687 for 10 years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. 3, Approval of a Board Order to Accept the Drug-Free Community Grant for Support of the Can-Be Prevention Coalition. Total award value is $625,000 for 5 years. Funding is through the Federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Required match is through funded Substance Use Prevention Programming Funds and $50,000 of budgeted county general funds. 4, Approval of an Amendment to a Revenue Lease Agreement with Genoa Healthcare for Lease of Clinical Space in the Development Services Building. Amendment value is $1,394.25 for 3 months. Total agreement value is $16,767.56 for 18 months. Funding is through Genoa Healthcare. No county general funds are involved. 5, Approval of an Amendment to a Grant Agreement with the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department for Administration of the Eviction, Prevention, and Diversion Program. Amendment value is $1321,619 for 1 year. Total agreement value is $5,128,976 for 2 years. Funding is through the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. No county general funds are involved. 6, Approval of a Personal Services Contract Amendment with AntPharm for Rural Homeless Outreach and Inclement Weather Response. Amendment value is $266,756 for 7 months. Total contract value is $234,462.84 for 2 years. Funding is through the Governor's State of Emergency Due to Homelessness State Funding. No county general funds are involved. 7, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Community Vision Incorporated to Provide Case Management for Individuals Eligible for Intellectual and Developmental Disability Services. Total contract value is $4576 for 2 years. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services Fund. No county general funds are involved. 8, Approval of an Amendment to a Purchase and Sale Intergovernmental Agreement with the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the purchase of the property at 15301 Southeast 92nd Avenue, Clackamas. Purchase price is $3,500,000. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services, Community Mental Health Program, and American Rescue Plan Act Funds. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the Consent Agenda.
Thank you very much. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything off this particular consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, that's alright. Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the Consent Agenda, and Commissioner West has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye, motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners, and we will convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District.
Next is the Consent Agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Item 3, A, Approval of an Amendment to a Purchase and Sale Intergovernmental Agreement with Clackamas County for the sale of the property at 15301 Southeast 92nd Avenue, Clackamas. Sale price is $3,500,000. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services, Community Mental Health Program, and American Rescue Plan Act Funds. No county general funds are involved. B, Approval of an Amendment with Phoenix Investment Group for a North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Maintenance Shop Lease Agreement. Amendment value is $221,923 for 2 years. Total agreement value is $337,135 for 3 years. Funding is through the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District General Fund. No county general funds are involved. C, Approval of a Permanent Easement with Oak Lodge Water Services Authority for Pipe Installation Across the Trolley Trail. Total agreement value is $1,100. Funding is through Oak Lodge Water Services Authority. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the Consent Agenda.
Thank you very much. Does any Director wish to remove an item off of this particular consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. It has been moved, approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda by Director Scholl and seconded by Director Schrader. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the poll?
Director West.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye, motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners for the next item. And here we go, up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as a BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to 3 minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take in-person testimony first from the blue cards. Up first is Elle Kimmel. Please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have 3 minutes.
My name is Lori Kimmel, South Clackamas County. This is my gripe, and I do have a solution for it. On October 28th, I went to turn in my ballot, and I got one foot in the door, and an elderly man stopped me and said, "What do you want?" I had my ballot in hand, and I says, "I would like to deposit my ballot." And he acted like he was going to take it, so I put my hand back. And I thought I was in line, and there was 6 staff members of the clerks just standing in the line. So then I went around and deposited my ballot. But this is the problem, I had one foot in the door, and I was stopped. And he was a very tall elderly man, I felt impeded. And also, there were 6 staff members standing around, twiddling their thumbs. They should have been out there helping. Wouldn't 2 members on the floor be better than 6? And then I noticed that I couldn't use the public restroom because someone was standing in the hallway blocking that. My solution is have 2 staff members on there, have volunteers properly trained so they don't impede someone as they come in the door. And I noticed when I was leaving, he was, the same elderly man, stopped another person who had one foot in the inside door. Now, and the guy says, "I just need a new envelope." And it was, he also was impeded. And I did forward my concerns to the BCC, I did not hear anything. I contacted Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Scholl contacted the clerk. The clerk's response was, "Well, my staff were just helping people." I don't call somebody impeding someone as a step in the door at the clerk's office as helping. And that's my grievance, and that's my solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, Les Poole. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have 3 minutes.
Good morning Commissioners, and staff, and everyone. Can't believe the year's almost over. I'm Les Poole, live here in the county, and want to touch on my favorite subject, transportation. I'm going to read a couple of things real quick here. I'm not going to read this whole document, but it says, "Whereas Interstate 205 is the backbone of Clackamas County's transportation system and a vital lifeline to our county businesses, whereas $1.9 billion of county's overall gross product lies in wholesale trade and transportation, and whereas over the last 5 years, we've urged certain actions involving I-5, 205." The reason I bring this up is this is from 2013. And here we are today, all of it still applies, but what's different? We have tolling on the horizon, and tolling was going to be the cash cow for ODOT. And there's 2 ways to toll things. One is to help pay for a project. Right now, I encourage folks to keep their eye on the 205 Abernathy Bridge. There's 2 new lanes going in, one on each side. Great investment, needed long ago. That's expanding capacity. Without getting too complex here, I can tell you that ODOT, without public vote, could easily toll those new lanes, or toll to pay for that. So where's the rub? Well, the rub is that isn't what ODOT wants to do, of course. What ODOT wants to do is establish the tolling scheme that's on hold. And the tolling scheme, the name I gave it long ago that seems to be catching on more and more, is that we'll be charged to drive on existing lanes. No real need to expand and eliminate the bottleneck between Stafford Road and the bridge. And ODOT, this tolling money, of course, will hopefully be available for other uses besides the actual freeways. So here we are, several years down the road, with the attempt to put together the tolling aspect, and obviously use some of that to help pay for the bridge. What about the rest of the bridge? They're spending hundreds of millions of dollars there. And while it's necessary, a lot of that came for earthquake proofing, a lot of it came from the federal government, but a lot of it's coming from money that they don't have. So we know that ODOT spent this summer going to various parts of the state, and what they did is, of course, basically they're looking for a way to come up with more money. And it's unfortunate, I never thought in all my years that ODOT would be viewed by myself and many others as a huge problem, as a misguided monster, whatever it may be, but that's how we see it. So I want to thank everyone that's worked on the tolling and transportation issues. We're ground zero for that mess, and I certainly just again encourage the county and anyone involved to stand up to what ODOT's planning, because it's just not right. I appreciate the time to speak, as always.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to testify today? I don't see anyone Andrew, is there anyone online?
Yes Madam Chair, I've received 2 advanced registrations to speak during public communication today. The first I've received is a Chris Waller from Milwaukee. Chris Waller, if you'd still like to speak, I'll ask you to raise your hand, and I'll allow you to speak.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. It's been a while since you've heard from me. Up until 2 weeks ago, Commissioner Scholl and Smith may have thought that the people who called them out on everything from misogyny, racism, and xenophobia, to anti-science propaganda, to throwing away federal dollars for homeless services in order to further their own agendas had given up and gone home. As we saw so resoundingly on November 5th, that was not the case. We never went away, but hundreds of us worked tirelessly behind the scenes for almost 2 years for this outcome. We knocked on tens of thousands of doors and spoke to thousands and thousands of people, and they agreed with us. What I would like to know, Commissioners Scholl and Smith, do you accept the will of the people? As far as I know, neither of you is publicly conceded. Will either of you publicly demonstrate that you accept the votes of Clackamas County residents in a free and fair election, conducted in an entirely professional manner by a competent county clerk? Chair Smith, you said last week you'd wait until it was over to make an announcement. Well, according to all major local news outlets, it is over. I hope we will hear from both of you today that you accept the will of the people. Thank you.
Andrew, who's next?
Madam Chair, the second advanced registration to speak today during public communication that I've received is from a Mike Weber, also of Milwaukee. Mike Weber of Milwaukee, if you are now online, I'll ask you to raise your hand, and I will
Are you there Mike?
Yes, thank you. Michael Weber, Jennings Lodge, Clackamas County. Free and fair elections are the backbone of our democracy. The casting of doubt in the integrity of the electoral process began in 2016, in the run-up of the presidential election by one candidate. His intent was clear, to be able to claim the election was stolen in the event he lost, and steal the presidency by any means necessary. Although it wasn't needed for that election, the ends at which that lie would be utilized was in full display in 2020, leading to the harassment of voters, death threats to election officials, the unlawful creation of fake electors, and even storming the Capitol to prevent the peaceful transfer of power. It is telling that all this talk of how broken our electoral process is magically disappeared, except perhaps in Arizona, once the votes were counted in 2024. You cannot call yourself a patriot or a believer in the rule of law if the only time the elections are free and fair is when you win. Tuesday was the last day to receive mail-in ballots. Yesterday was the last day to receive forwarded ballots. As of last night, there are only 5,400 ballots remaining that have been accepted and uncounted. Catherine McMullen has done an outstanding job of being transparent and ensuring that this election was run with integrity. Chair Smith, you are currently trailing Craig Roberts by over 27,000 votes. There are only 16,500 physical ballots left in the office. Please state for the record that you believe that the election was free and fair, and that you abide by the will of the people. Commissioner Scholl, you are currently trailing Melissa Fireside by nearly 6,000 votes with only 5,400 uncounted. Even ignoring the shockingly large 26% undervote in the position 4 election, it is mathematically impossible for you to prevail. Please state for the record that you believe that the election was free and fair, that you concede your race, and you will abide by the will of the people. Commissioner West was correct. We, the people of Clackamas County, are your boss. We have spoken. Chair Smith, Commissioner Scholl, thank you for your service. But it is time to accept the election results, move on, and let new leadership take the county in a different direction. Thank you for your time.
Andrew, is there anyone else online?
Good job, good job.
Madam Chair, I've received no other advanced registrations to speak today. However, if you are attending the meeting virtually and you'd now like to speak during public comment, I'll ask you to please raise your hand, and I'll call on you in the order Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you very much. We will now close this portion of the meeting for public communication and move on. Gary, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update, that's me. I'd like to recognize our employees for their great work during my time. Today, I'd like to honor and recognize Tara Richardson, who's an intensive care coordinator within our Behavioral Health Division of Health Housing and Human Services. She recently received a compliment on some work she did- She recently received a compliment on some work she did for a client who is going through a behavioral health crisis. The client wrote, "I was paired with Tara, who is a real advocate for me. I am grateful and will be grateful for the rest of my life. Recovery is possible." Tara's family members wrote that their loved one is a success story because of the care coordination provided by Tara in Clackamas County. The connection to the treatment providers and the ongoing advocacy shown by Tara has changed their family's lives forever. So thank you, Tara, and all of our team who work in our intensive care coordinator unit here at the county for supporting the public. Next, our building code staff in transportation and development received a compliment from some work that was completed in Canby. A member of the public from Canby wrote, "I recently finished an addition to my house. I just wanted to say, everyone that I have been in contact with in Clackamas County bent over backwards to help me. I am computer illiterate and they did, they did it all for me, making sure I had the right inspection codes, scheduling inspections for me when I screwed it up, and they always had a smile in their voice. I hope someone lets them know how much it means to us, those of us who are computer-challenged and don't deal with this stuff on a regular basis, how invaluable their help is. The inspectors were great, too. They really helped me out. Label me a happy Clackamas County resident." Thank you for that kind note and thank you to our building code staff for the work they do like that every day. Finally, a protocol announcement. The Board will be on recess next week, November 18th through 21, to attend the Oregon Association, the Association of Oregon Counties Conference in Eugene. There will be no business meeting next Thursday, November 21st. The next Board business meeting will be Wednesday, November 27th at 10:00 a.m. because of the Thanksgiving holiday that week. So again, no business meeting next week. Next Board business meeting is on Wednesday, November 27th at 10:00 a.m. That is my update today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Gary, good news. Up next is Commissioner Communication. Commissioner West, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. It's been a dreadful week. I'm here in DC. I'll be back for the AOC conference. Look forward to that. Going to be doing a lot of work and discussion across the state around addiction and recovery and focusing on how we help those that are struggling with those issues and how intersex homelessness and giving people the care that they deserve and need. I'm proud of Clackamas County. We have outperformed the rest of the state in dealing with that critical population. We've done the Clackamas County way. The Board of Leadership has been exceptional. I'm proud of my colleagues and how we do that in the transportation issue, the fight against tolling, how we fight with the culture of public safety, how we make sure that all people feel welcome to belong in this county and have a space and to bring their talents and their merit and their worth to make sure that we all engage the community together. I'm proud of every one of you. You guys all should hold your head up high regardless of how this last election went. And I appreciate every constituent who we do work for, bringing their concerns and bringing their thoughts and their ideas before us to consider, regardless of whether or not we agree with them. We're not asking for agreement. We're not asking you to fall in lockstep with us, but we are asking you to participate and to do it politely. And so I wanted to make sure that was said. And I look forward to the good work that we're going to do with our colleagues across the state. A lot of good stuff comes out of AOC and out of the National Association of Counties, which Martha and I are plugged in. I love working with you, Martha, and it's an honor to be your colleague and working with such a talented class act as yourself. You always present that, not just to the public but professionally behind the scenes, too. So, yeah, I don't have much to say. I have the honor today, I'll just tell you where I'm at before I give up the floor here. I got my library card today at the Library of Congress here in DC and I'm sitting in the Library of Congress in these very inspiring halls of knowledge, doing a public service and attending the meeting for Clackamas County as your commissioner. And so it's kind of a real, kind of surreal moment. It's a little bit nerdy, but I'm enjoying it a lot. And it's just been an honor to be able to serve these last two years and that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yes, colleagues, thank you. Yeah, it's been kind of a grueling election season and as many of you know that I won my seat by, it's been consistently my common theme, is not left, not right, but forward. So I do my best to keep this, my attitude towards this work is the work is the most critical piece. I keep party politics out of this. And I would like to say that I have nothing but respect for Commissioner Scholl and Commissioner Smith. This is not to say that we have not disagreed on various things. We have, okay? Sometimes we see things through a different lens. But our job when we are elected is to work who we are elected to serve with. And I have found serving with these two individuals to be enlightening. I've enjoyed their company. I feel as if Commissioner Smith and I have become personal friends and I hope that this will be a friendship that will continue for the ages. I want people to be well aware of the service. Commissioner Scholl has done this country and he has seen things in Iraq that probably would make the most of us cringe. He has been in combat. He has served us well, not only as a combat veteran, he has served us well as a county commissioner. Again, this is not to say that I've agreed with everything and comments and things of that sort, but this is a difficult job. And I would appreciate my dear colleagues who are Democrats, who I have always supported with my sponsorships and my dinners at my house, to please consider that let people do what they're going to do in their own time. I appreciate all the work you've done for me and other candidates. However, I really wish that you had spoken to me before you were going to make comments like this this morning. It creates bad feelings in my way. It is not in the way of being not left, not right, but forward. And I hope that from here on out, when you have these kinds of comments to make, since I am going to be here another four years, please, could you please call me first and let me know? Because whether or not I agree with my colleagues on every single issue, I really don't like to see anyone who I work with in a way be blindsided like this. So please, this is a courteous thing I'm asking for you to do. And I'm, in the spirit of Braver Angels, which is an organization I've talked about many times, we need to put aside the divisiveness and I believe that's what we can be best at as Americans and treat people with respect. So thank you, Commissioner Scholl, for your service here as well as in the military. And thank you, Commissioner, Chair Smith. We've had many interactions together and I have learned to love your directness, your, you know, not taking any kind of BS from anybody, quite frankly, and enjoy your company tremendously. So thank you for that, colleagues.
I enjoy you, too. Thank you, Martha.
Okay.
Up next is Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, and good morning, Clackamas County. As we draw towards the end of the year, we have work yet to do, so the Board will be very busy finishing up some of the things we need to finalize before our Christmas break. And this morning, I would like to welcome to our meeting First Lieutenant James Vado visiting us from his duty station in Italy, protecting freedom for the American people around the world, as are many of our service members in many nations, on just about every continent but one, this morning, protecting the interests of the people of the United States of America. First Lieutenant James Vado, thank you for joining us this morning. On freedom of speech, this nation, one of the most important rights our people have is a freedom of speech. And I always enjoy listening to the comments made during public communication, whether I agree with them or not, whether they're polite or not. The important thing is, Clackamas County, every resident has a right to come before the Board and speak their mind and I always enjoy hearing it. Thank you for putting us on your schedule this morning for those of you who testified. Regarding Les Poole's comments about tolling, you know, ever since the idea to toll I-205 came up, I've said it's a bad idea, not just a bad idea, but a very, very bad idea. It's too expensive. People can't afford it. $2,400 a year to go, for example, from Glassstone to Wilsonville and back, five days a week, 50 weeks out of the year, it'd be about $2,400. Nobody can afford that. We cannot toll our freeways that you have already paid for. We need to come up with another idea. A comment regarding K-12 schools. Now, the Board of Commissioners does not make decisions on K-12 schools, but it's always been a concern of mine. For every dollar that the people of Clackamas County pay in property taxes, 43 cents of it gets sent to the state Department of Education. They take, roll up that money and send it back down to the school districts. Now, in the next two years, because the state runs on a biennial, two-year budget, those school districts, those 197 school districts in Oregon will have to pay another $670 million of the money they receive from the state to operate their schools, $670 million more in the next two years will have to go to pay for PERS. That's $670 million that doesn't pay for actual things that are happening in the classroom. And the glide path we are on in the state of Oregon when it comes to K-12 schools is not sustainable. It's going to crash. So I encourage parents to get involved. I encourage our Clackamas Caucus to get involved and begin to work on this. We have some people, some organizations in the state, like Parents' Rights in Education that advocate for alternative schools. We're going to have to do something. So please be involved this year in trying to effect the action on K-12 schools. So with that, thank you very much for your time this morning.
Thank you very much. I'm going to read a statement that I had, it's a second statement that has been released to the media, by the way, on my behalf. "To the people of Clackamas County, I am deeply grateful to have served as your county commission chair for the past four years, and it has been a real privilege. During my short time as chair, I am confident that I leave the county stronger and more prosperous than when I first arrived. My tenure as chair began under three simultaneously declared emergencies in 2021. And despite these initial emergencies, we have seen tremendous successes. We fully funded our police and ensured that they have the tools to keep us safe. We reduced homelessness by 65%. We led the fight to stop tolling. We overturned Measure 110, the measure that allowed killer drugs to fill our streets, devastating families and businesses across the state. Additionally, we protected your hard-earned dollars from government overreach and we've been vigilant about transparency and reducing wasteful spending. We invested in our future with new libraries, health clinics, roads, fair facility, and most notably, a $330 million courthouse, all without raising your taxes. These one-time expenditures will last for decades and generations to come. And I end my time as your chair knowing that we were able to right-size our budget, ending with a $153 million reserves and contingency and rainy day fund because I ran our government as I would a business. What other government agency can make these claims to our successes? And these successes would not have been possible without our amazing staff at Clackamas County and my hat is off to every single one of you. To everyone who supported my campaign, please know that my commitment to Clackamas County does not end here. I will always work to protect our community and strengthen our future. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you and let's keep moving forward and fight to keep Clackamas, Clackamas, and may God bless you all." See no further business before this commission. We are adjourned.